We will call this meeting to order for Monday, September 12th, regular council meeting. And we will begin with the land acknowledgement. So the town of Innisvale acknowledges that we are meeting on Treaty VII territory, the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy, Kanai, Pecanee, and Siksekka, as well as the Sutina First Nation and Stony Nakota First Nation. We acknowledge that this territory is home to the Métis Nation of Alberta, Region Three, within the historical northwest Métis homeland. We acknowledge the many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit who have lived in and cared for these lands for generations. We are grateful for the traditional knowledge keepers and elders who are still with us today, and those who have gone before us. We make this acknowledgement as an act of reconciliation and gratitude to those whose territory we reside on. We'll move into the agenda, 2.1. Any additions or deletions? No? Okay. Can I please have somebody please make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Councilor Miss Harris. All in favor? Thank you. And we'll move into 3.1, regular council meeting minutes. And when someone's ready, please make a motion to adopt those minutes.
Mayor Berkeley will make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Dunham. Any discussion, changes needed? No? Okay. All in favor? And then, item 3.2, agenda and priorities committee meeting. Somebody please make a motion to adopt those.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Highstead. All in favor? Great. Thank you. And we will move into 4.1, CEO report. The CEO, Becker.
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. Just to review the report with you, council, a few items. Recently, the town of Innisvale, through the CEO and the CAO, were invited to be a panelist at the upcoming AAM convention with the session titled "Council's Leadership and Intended and Unintended Impact on Organizational Culture," which will occur on Wednesday morning. Actually, I'll say Thursday afternoon, but actually, it's Wednesday morning, just to be fun, funny. I asked AAM leadership why were we approached with this invite, along with the town of Cochrane, CEO and CAO. It's really due to the reflection of positivity coming from the community through media is first impression. So they've asked council to have representation. So just more reflection to your leadership council, represented in this case with the mayor and the CAO, to have this discussion. I just want to give you a few items of attention, just through really the dedication leadership of the SLT, senior leadership team, but more specifically to Director of Corporate Services on the ongoing development of our HR program. Right now, through the Director of Corporate Services, we're building out a robust inventory of administrative policies in reflection to HR and the support of our employees. With that, any corporate policies that we identify would certainly come back to your attention. That's more in relation to resources that are required. Once, I can't remember, Eric, how many policies we've gone through?
Eighteen.
So eighteen, and expecting fifteen-ish more. So we've chunked them out, smaller policies, easy access and easy read, but we'll certainly share this manual with council once it's complete. It's a lot of work and a lot of attention by management. Just due to recent conversation, administration will be initiating a service review. It's the review of our after-hours call service, which some of you may have accessed. After-hours, weekends, you phone the town number and you get a call service, and then they will pull the information and then allocate accordingly to the departments, but whoever's on call. But we just felt that it was necessary to make sure the service is up to speed and meeting the expectations of the town, but also our citizens and those that are seeking after our support. Just wanted to let you know that there has been some movements recently on the council's directive to develop a scope of work regarding mental health discussion. Administration has had a couple of conversations with a small group of community health-related services, and it's gone quite well with, through psychology, but also enforcement. Really, starting small. We don't want to scope it out too big, but just pulling together some information to come back to you, council, in the near future, with some thoughts and ideas based on the small group discussion, and see if you'd like to advance the conversation further based on the information you will receive. The intent is just informing that this is in play and in action at grassroots, more administrative level currently. Next time on the report here is regarding the IPD, and not specifically to the program or the contents, but let staff answer any of those questions on what is happening with IPD. But I just wanted to reflect on the amount of time required this week. Staff will be going through some training, further training with a full team of IPD, but also the ongoing work in relation to getting this validation report complete by likely extended a little bit further into January, February, January, into January. But just, I want to make sure you're aware that the demand of services from administrative staff is understood. So it is a weekly, ongoing focus from now until the end of the validation draft. Besides that, on the report, just a few items outlining some engagements, and I'll just let them, let you read that. And if there's any, actually, there's a few other items not on this report, mayor and council. Just want to talk about strategic planning, pre-budgets, which is scheduled for Thursday. I know we do have a few council members unable to attend. Just looking for direction, if you wish to continue on with that Thursday, 4 till 7, or potentially the AMP, the following Monday. The reason putting emphasis on the engagements of the meeting session is to help get the directors and management moving into your focus area. So again, I initially put strategic planning, but it's really a pre-budgetary and strategic planning coordination of the two. So looking for some direction there. And then finally, you would have saw an email from Cara this morning regarding Transition Accelerator. We haven't talked about this training that's been booked for early part of November, but just reminder that if you aren't planning on attending, we do need to know immediately. But right now, it's slated for council and SLT to attend. And I'll take any questions.
Okay. Thank you, CEO Becker. Can I just get a show of hands, who can attend on Thursday to the, so five? So would you like to go ahead? I personally feel we should. I mean, we've put this off once, and I don't know, when I go through the strap plan, I tick a lot of boxes. It's been a busy time, and I think it's such an important time of year going into budget, and administration needs to know some direction. We can, you know, share that with the counselors who cannot attend, but Councilor Bates?
Yes. So I had to actually put a little note in my roundtable. In my opinion, it's critically important that we do it, because I think it's important that we define our capacity and our priorities. And I think we have so many things on the go and potentially coming, that we need to do that. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilor Highstead?
If the group wants to move ahead with it, I'm totally okay with it. I'm actually going to be away for the week on a holiday with my wife, but I did send an email to the group and to Todd and Cara of some of the items that I see fit for administration to work on and which fits with our strategic plans. So if everybody wants to meet on that night, I'm fine with it. It'll be good.
I'm just sorry that I can't be here. If it could be put off, I would ask that it be put off so that I could attend, but I'm sure that I can be caught up on what's been discussed. And I don't know if there's anything I can contribute between now and Thursday morning at 6:00 a.m. Just let me know.
Well, and I think too, it's, you know, the discussions we have aren't going to be final discussions. It's going to be ideas, and it's going to, you know, probably be driven more so by administration and capacity and financial and resource capacity as well. So we can share that and bring everybody up to speed, and who knows, you might be there. Yeah, I know. So anybody else have any comments? Okay. So I think we'll go ahead with that, and then have somebody make a motion to accept the CAO's report.
I'd still move, Mayor Berkeley, that we accept the CEO's report for information.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Harrison. And I was just going to ask a question, maybe, or direct it to Director Kennedy, with the IDP meetings that are taking place, and CEO Becker mentioned, you know, that the whole team, like, what does that incorporate? And kind of tell us a little bit about what goes on in a meeting, briefly.
Sure. Briefly. It's a long spoken.
Yeah, I bet it is.
So these three days specifically, I guess, is, the first day will be kind of an overview for the whole team. So we have every contractor, the contractors we've chosen, the consultants and the engineers, all coming into a room, provide an overview of the whole project to date, kind of what we've talked to council about, will present them with that history. We're also going to go take a tour of the sites, tour of the existing pool. And then, the next two days, you get right to work. So it's in a big room. You have everybody putting ideas up on the boards, so it's very productive, is what we're told. Never experienced it myself, so, but really looking forward to how that all looks. It was very clear to the group that this isn't just a free day of training that the town's going to pay for. It's specific, and we did have rules and guidelines of who can attend and who gets paid for what and everything. So it's very laid out, very clear to everybody, so that part I thought was really good, to see how responsible they are in regards to acknowledging that they are spending our dollars with big groups like this, and we want to be productive. So, and then from there, it's, we did do a survey and a tally throughout the group. It looks like we'll be going to Edmonton every other Wednesday, into a big room again. Everyone joins together, and we'll be doing it. It was just, again, more economical, more feasible for the three of us, Meg and I, and probably Trish, to go there than having 15 of them come here, so. So that's kind of the process that we'll move forward.
Thank you. Well, we look forward to hearing more about it. We have a motion to accept the CEO report. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. And we'll move on to 4.2. So there's Economic Developers Conference Association Dinner coming up in Edmonton in October. It's a ministers dinner, so both provincial and federal ministers are going to be there. It's an opportunity to, I guess, network and hopefully get an opportunity to meet some people and talk about what's going into Innisvale. So I'm asking that a motion is made that I can attend. That includes the cost of the dinner and travel time. I'll just go up and back the same evening. So if anybody wants to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor Berkeley.
Thank you, Councilor Bates. Any questions about it? Councilor Highstead?
Yeah. Just question if there was anybody else that may want to attend as well, seeing that there's a lot going on the next few years, and networking is critical. So that's what I'm asking, if there's anybody else that may want to go with the mayor.
Through to Councilor Highstead. Now, I think this is a function that, and I fully support Mayor Berkeley attending. It's great that they have these forums where, you know, our folks can get there and do that networking, but I think that we're very well represented and represented with Mayor Berkeley, so I fully support Councilor Bates's motion that she attends that function.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to 4.3, and the action control.
Just a couple of items, Mayor Berkeley and council. I think Stephen, you wanted to make mention of the DISC golf.
Probably a couple of items that are on here. First, I guess, in regards to the organics and recycling, we've had a few days in there. So one of the things I guess that was overlooked in regards to, when we did the solid waste bylaw, we actually did revise and updated the date in regards to clarity that it is during the winter months. So we've made it very flexible to be able to adjust when we decide to go bi-weekly and when we decide to go back to weekly. So I think that item, we addressed in, if council's okay with that, that we did address that in that solid waste bylaw update that was done earlier in the year. So if the council's okay with that. And then also, yeah, in regards to the DISC golf, I did meet with the Kinsmen. They are going to postpone the other nine, put some further design thought into it, and then come back to us in the spring of next year. So we'll just take that one off for now and come back to you when they're ready to present.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, CEO Becker?
And just one other item, mayor and council, would be the Williams Group of Companies action item. As you can see before you, there is some indication or notification from the Williams Group that they will choosing not to attend council in the near future and working towards a public engagement in another manner. So asking council direction, if you consider this action item complete, we'll note it in the minutes, just so it's on record, but other than that, that's our other direction.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah. It just indicates your, because it was a council directive, that you're supporting the current action.
Okay. Councilor Bates?
I'll move that we remove it from the action control.
Okay. All in favor? Just, can you scroll back a little bit? Cara, please, to the...
So is that both have been moved, or can be removed, or just the one, the Williams Group?
Just the Williams Group. What else were you referring to?
My motion was just the Williams Group.
Yeah, just Williams Group.
Is there two references to the?
So Director Kennedy had expressed that the DISC golf update would be taken off, so I'm just wondering if a motion needs to be made for that as well?
Do you want to take it off, or do you want to just move it into the springtime date?
We can hear it from the three.
Sure. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Can you scroll back a little bit, Cara, towards the top? There was, so the, hang on here. The, there we go. So the AP Alberta Police Service Public Information Session for, is that going to happen in September? Or then, I know, like, I think it's too busy to be doing that at this point in time.
Mayor Berkeley, it still is the intention through our manager of Fire and Protective Services, and the recent dialogue is to have it likely into mid to early, sorry, mid, up to latest, mid-October.
Yeah. Okay. And there was something else on here that was complete, too. Can you just scroll down a little bit, please? A little bit further, maybe? Oh, the, okay. It is, it's in red, sorry. Yeah. The gate. Perfect. Okay. Councilor Miss Harris, did you have something to add?
I was just going to ask something through to Director Kennedy about the DISC course. So they're coming back with a different version of what they brought the first time, and is that taking into consideration some of the concerns that council had about the placement of some of the holes, or?
It is, I think they understand some of the concerns they've heard through the, just without formally providing it to them. So the group is looking at, yeah, trying to reconfigure it as well as address some of the concerns they have with the existing nine holes, so that we can come back with a whole, kind of a service plan. Yep.
Okay. I'll have somebody please accept the, make a motion to accept the council action control as information.
Mayor Berkeley will make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Dunham. All in favor? Great. We will move into 5.1, and solar project with Director Kennedy.
Thanks, Berkeley. So, yeah, so in front of you, I have just an update in regards to the solar farm application approval and design process. So as you're aware, we have engaged Green Cat Renewables to do an assessment for the feasibility to develop a solar development within the Southwest Industrial Park and provide us with support to obtain the regulatory approvals. Few of the items that they've done to date is, we've completed the submission to Fortis for the application for the initial and high-level study. As well, they did a preliminary project layout that indicates the capacity of the project would be in between the 1.5 to 2 megawatt range. Also, to date, Green Cat has been able to obtain urban project referral report and has confirmed that no further environmental evaluations are required for the project from Alberta Environmental Parks. Further, they have conducted a preliminary glare and noise check on the proposed layout, and has found that it is in compliance with the AUC rules. In addition, they've concluded that the project should be eligible for the AUC's checklist application process, and that's just in brief of that one. It's just that they've refined the process for solar farms, and this checklist application process just makes it a lot simpler to go through. So they have done a preliminary look at that to see that we've got to met the requirements for it. The proposal has been prepared by Green Cat to present the next phases of work and cost estimates for regulatory permitting for the project under the AUC's checklist. Primary goal of the scope is to obtain relevant permits along the project to progress to the detailed design and construction. The project will require approval from the AUC, Alberta Utility Commission, and has been assumed to be considered under the AUC's checklist process. Green Cat has made allowances for all the work and submission documents they deem to be feasibly required as part of this process. As well, in the proposal, they did provide a summary of the next, for phases four, and four to six, to complete the project commissioning. Administration will continue to update council as the project progresses. Some of the financial impacts, the project will be funded from the General Cap Reserve. However, if the project is to move forward to detail, full detailed design and construction, the cost of all the phases will be included in the full amount. That will be debentured and will not be pulled from the General Cap Reserve. So my understanding is, right now, it would just be put in WIP. So we would just do that until we decide on the final project funding. So we are looking at council to approve the Phase Two and Three portions of the proposal for the Southwest Industrial Solar Farm Development for the full amount of $109,485 to be funded from the General Cap Reserve at this time. I'll take any questions.
Okay. Thank you. I'll have someone make the recommended motion, and then we can open it up for discussion. Councilor Wing?
Excuse me, Mayor Berkeley. I would make the motion that council approve the Phase Two and Three portions of the proposed Southwest Industrial Park solar farm development for the amount of $109,485 to be funded from the General Capital Reserve.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Councilor Harrison?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Berkeley. Question through to Director Kennedy. Who owns it after it's built? Does the, will the town, will that be one of our assets? And will collect revenue off of the power that's generated?
Correct. So, yeah, it would be our full asset, and the generation revenue would come to the town as one of our revenue generators.
So Green Cat, all they're doing is the company that's building the actual facility.
Yeah. They're our consultant.
Consultant, so we have complete ownership and complete money from the generation of power.
Comes from our pocket. Yep.
Yep. Thank you.
Councilor Dunham?
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley, through to Director Kennedy. I'm just trying to refresh, or if you could refresh my memory back to when you originally brought this to us, is that 1.5 to 2? Is that what you'd originally scoped out with the $500,000 of potential revenue each year, or has that changed?
No, that's correct. So it has been in that range still. The half, the $500,000 revenue is, was based on a projection, so that is, will be refined as we get further into the project, though. So that is still just a rough estimate. Yep. Thank you.
Councilor Bates?
Just looking at the alternate anticipated outcomes, which it just went, got it back now, which was, one of them was to proceed with the full project and apply for the debenture. Could someone describe what applying for the debenture exactly? What's the process?
Mayor Berkeley, through to Councilor Bates. So there, it's a relatively simple procedure. We fill out about three different forms, submit our financial statements along with these forms, and then it goes to the Alberta government, where they would review it all and see if we're a right fit.
Okay. And so would we, would we structure how we wanted to deal with principal interest, all that kind of stuff?
That's correct. We get to decide, well, not what the interest is, but for how many years, if we want an interest-only loan, or if we have a blended, we can decide all of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Director Kennedy, just a question about, you know, with the Varma Energy Conversation and some others, we've heard, you know, kind of some discussions about the solar project being behind the fence as opposed to tied into the grid and kind of staying away from going into the grid, then pulling it back off the grid. Does the same process still apply regardless of whether it gets tied in or not?
So I think I'm understanding your question, Mayor Berkeley, is, yeah, can we use this solar farm to directly service? Is that what you're?
Yeah. I'm asking if we could...
Versus going into Fortis's grid?
Yes.
Yeah. My understanding would be, this would just go into Fortis's grid, and then if a Varma was to come online, they would then apply to Fortis for, because it was an excessive amount of power. So I'm not sure how we would, yeah, go about, in a different approach.
My understanding, if we were to go that way, would be, we would have to have an off-taker in line before we tied in, if you were going to avoid the grid entirely, and that that connection would be completely separate from the Fortis installation that is part of the overall subdivision.
So was there potential there, or does it matter at this point in time?
We'll have to...
Kind of where we are as far as the phases?
Yeah. And at this point, I guess, my understanding with Varma is they're not, they're not looking necessarily for energy source as they...
Well, they're not.
...kind of have their own. But, yes, some of the other inquiries that we've had, we would have to get into that design process.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we have a motion to carry on with Phase Two and Three. Any further questions, discussion? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Thank you. Carrie. And then... And then, we will move into 6.1, so Electronic Tax and Assessment Communication Bylaw with Director Vickers.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. So, as indicated, I am providing council with the draft Electronic Tax and Assessment Communication Bylaw for first reading. So, this new bylaw will give us the ability to email tax and assessment notices and any other tax-related communications to the residents. So, in 2018, the Municipal Government Act was updated, and Section 608.1, Sending Documents, now allows documents to be sent by electronic means if the recipient has consented and provided an email address, and if it is possible to make a copy of the document from the electronic transmission. And then additionally, in late 2019, the province released Bill 25, which was the Red Tape Reduction Implementation Act, that further and added Section 608.1-1 to the Municipal Government Act, stating a council may by bylaw establish a process to electronically transmit documents, notification, and information under Parts 9, 10, or 11 of the Act, or under the regulations as well. And those are all the financial tax-related sections in the MGA. 608.1-2 also allows council to pass a bylaw establishing the process of electronic transmission under Section 1492 or 3 of the Education Act, which when property changes hands, we do have to send out a document indicating what school support they would like to, to text, so that's why that's in there as well. So, if council elects to establish a bylaw for electronic transmission of assessment and taxation documents, they must be satisfied that the proposed bylaw ensures the security and confidentiality of the notices, documents, and info, information being sent. Also, council must give notice of the proposed bylaw in a matter they consider is likely to bring the proposed bylaw to the attention of substantially all persons affected. So, the process is simple, secure, and 100% driven by the taxpayer. The taxpayer, they must opt-in, it's not an automatic opt-in, so they actually have to, well, a form hasn't been created, but will be creating a form that has their name, address, and email address, and basically saying that they would like to receive electronic notification. Their email and information are used for assessment and tax, taxation notification purposes, and all notices generated create an archived copy that is easily accessible to retrieve showing what was sent, when, and by whom. So, that's all inside our finance software. So, not only do we keep a record of the emails and who they went to, we can actually just go in and resend the exact same email that was sent before, as well, we keep a copy of all their notices in the system. So, if first reading is passed by council, administration will be placing an ad in the paper advertising the bylaw for the next two weeks before bringing the bylaw back for second and third readings. And then, once the bylaw has received all three readings and our financial software is configured to update email tax notices, administration will start taking steps to advertise to the public for signing up this new electronic service. And we, we do hope that it's all set in place for the 2023 taxation year, so likely next February, or March or April likely, is we'll start sending out requests for signing up for electronic tax notices. So, that's all I have. If there are any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. I will get somebody to please make the recommended motion. Counselor Mizeros.
I'll move that council accepts and gives bylaw 1692-2022 Electronic Tax and Assessment Communication First Reading.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Director Vickers?
Mayor Barkley, through to Director Vickers. I have a question about signing up for it. Is that, will someone, will we sign up for it on a piece of paper, or will we sign up for it online?
Yes, Mayor Barkley, through to Counselor Mizeros. We will actually create that option both ways, so there will be a paper copy, so if you come in, into the office, you can fill it out, but we actually prefer an electronic copy anyway, that way, the email address is very clear. So, we already accept both for utility emails, we actually, there's no requirement to have a bylaw for that, so we've been sending those out for the last few years quite successfully. I would say probably about a third of our 3,500, 3,500 utility counts get emailed out right now, so around, over 1,000 anyway, so we're hoping similarly, some of those people would also want their tax notice emailed as well.
Anything else? Counselor Bates?
With the flexibility that you've described of being able to opt-in or opt-back-out and coverage for the change of property, I, I fully support it.
Okay, all in favor? Great. And we will move on to 6.2, the Atco Gas Franchise Agreement with Director Vickers.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor Barkley. So, this RFD is to provide council with the draft Atco Franchise Agreement bylaw for first reading. So, the franchise agreement is an agreement between Atco and the municipality. In this agreement, the municipality grants Atco certain rights to provide natural gas distribution service to customers. In turn, Atco commits to terms and conditions under which it will deliver natural gas service within the community. So, the town of Innesville first entered into an agreement with Atco in 1956, or at least the agreement that I, that we have currently, and it's been just renewed since then. And a bylaw is required to enter, even enter into the agreement, and that's why this bylaw, 1695-2022 Atco Gas Franchise Agreement, has been prepared to reflect this. So, following first reading, a mandatory advertising period will take place to solicit public comment on the proposed bylaw and agreement. Once this is complete, Atco will prepare the required submission to the AUC. Once the AUC has approved the agreement, Atco will prepare the agreement for execution. The final version of the agreement will form part of the bylaw when it is presented for second and third readings. So, this likely will take a process of anywhere from two to three months, and while our contract is due up near the end of this year, they have said if this process does move past our, our date, that everything will be fine. So, the expired agreement remains in effect until the agreement is either terminated, sorry, or renewed. So, currently, the town receives a franchise fee of 27% of Atco's distribution revenues, that's excluding the commodity cost for the gas. This rate can be adjusted up to 35%. The rate allocated within the 2022 operating budget represents just over $276,000 in revenue to the town. At this time, likely, I don't think we're going to be increasing it, but we'll bring that closer to budget time to make that discussion. And this proposed agreement does allow the town to collect property taxes on Atco gas infrastructure, all their linear lines. Currently, we don't do that right now. That would mean adding an additional levy on everyone's gas bills to compensate for the recouping of the property taxes, so. But yeah, so if there are any questions, I'll be happy to take them, if not.
Okay, thank you. Please have somebody make the recommended motion. Counselor Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. The council accepts and gives bylaws 1695-2022 Atco Gas Franchise Agreement First Reading.
Perfect, thank you. I have a question for you on the, under Franchise Fee 5B, so I know, I think we had this discussion last year, Director Vickers, as far as the timing goes, they're asking us to decide on franchise fee prior to really our, our budget discussions, and is it possible to change that date? I, I know there, I can't remember whether it was them or Fortis had a little pushback, and, and we kind of pushed back ourselves, and they said, okay, fine. So, I'm wondering if that can be changed to a, like a December date or something?
Remember, I think we did pose the questions both to Fortis and Atco, and both stated, kind of under the breath, that if we need to go a little bit later, just let them know, but they prefer to keep it as it is than any agreements, but give us rate, and not really promote it, but to allow us to come in after the budget process, or during the budget process.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I, I think the discussion that we were having, a lot of municipalities were, are having, and, and so it might be something when you're discussing with them to, you know, we're not the only ones impacted by that date, and, and it might be wise, if they can, to, to change it.
Just to add, council, that Atco representatives will be coming in advance, so if you approve first reading, then they'd like to come and see you formally and informally between first reading and then second and third.
Okay, great, thank you. Counselor Bates?
Yep, just wondering if anyone could tell me, is there any perceived benefit or, or detriment to, to that not being a full 10 years? Like, is that, do other people, just curious?
Mayor Barkley, through to Counselor Bates, so this will be a 10-year agreement.
Right, I, I see that, but I'm wondering, is there any problem if it was a five-year agreement, does it, does it cost extra to redo it? Or I, I look at us talking about being an energy hub, and we don't know what, like, 10 years is a long time, just curious as to whether or not other municipalities have less. Obviously, it's changed over the years, because 56, we got off that cycle somehow. But, just wondering, just, just asking the question.
I think that's a really good question, Counselor Bates. What I'd recommend for you to do, you still can make adjustments, it's only first reading, I'd say, consider first reading and have that engagement with Atco and pose that question if there's opportunity to readjust that term.
Okay, that's good.
Counselor Wing.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Through to Director Vickers, I just want, I would just like some clarification, because I'm not sure if I misheard it or if I misread it, but under financial impacts, so we have, are we budgeting currently at 27%? And that amount that's reflected here is 726,000? Okay, I thought I heard 276,000.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine, I thought, okay, just clarifying, thank you.
Did I?
No, it's all good. Okay, anything else? No, Kate, all in favor of the motion? Great, thank you. And we will move on to 7.1, Varma Public Participation with Director Jenkins.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. So, we're looking to present potential options and invite council into a discussion about the expectations around public participation with respect to the Varma Waste to Energy Project. So, the town does have a public participation policy that commits to involving citizens and local government, in local government and decision-making where appropriate, applicable, and necessary. So, the policy identifies a spectrum ranging from informing through empowering of the public for their participation, coinciding with the levels of public impact of a pro, project. So, again, the policy outlines a process to develop a public participation plan that will outline activities to take place throughout the project. So, the policy is based on the IAP2 public participation model, and goes, basically addresses how much you involve the public based on the perceived impact to the public of a, of a decision or a project. So, at the inform level, essentially, you're informing the public, keeping them up to date, but not necessarily inviting comment or input, and then as you go through that spectrum, you're increasing the opportunities for public feedback, as well as the commitment of what you do with that feedback, as to whether you're just taking comments to allow for that feedback to be taken into council's consideration, or are you actually giving decision-making power to, to the public in any situation? So, the Varma project is large-scale and will likely generate significant interest and questions throughout its development. It will also require development and other permitting processes that may invite the involvement of the public. Prior to entering into a purchase agreement with Varma, administration is recommending that public participation be explored. Varma Energy has hosted one public information session on August 25th. The event was well attended, attended, and recent media coverage will likely increase community awareness of the project. However, ongoing education and updates may be valuable to ensuring accurate and timely information is available. So, information, administration has identified that the project would be best suited for either that informing, maybe getting into the consulting level of engagement. Consulting provides the opportunity for the public to provide feedback on decisions, and council commits to listening and acknowledging concerns while providing feedback on how public influence was considered in their process. So, informing is typically only a one-way communication, providing public information, but not requesting that, that feedback in return. So, activities that support consultation may include the creation of online material on the town's website regarding the project, with the option to submit comments, or alternately, or in addition, having public sessions. So, just wanting to have some feedback from council as to what your thoughts are as to keeping the public up to date on this. Again, this is a, a situation where the town is operating not only as the regulator on a permitting process, but also as the, the property owner if we were to be selling the, the land, so, yeah, just looking for, for feedback and what some expectations may be on that, on that front.
Okay, thank you, Director Jenkins. Could I please have somebody make the motion, and then we can have a discussion?
Mayor Barkley, I would recommend, mayor, make the motion that council direct administration to prepare a public participation plan to consult the public as part of decision-making surrounding the Varma Waste to Energy Project.
Okay, thank you. And then, discussion. Counselor, Counselor Highstone.
Yeah, actually, I'd like to, looking at the numbers here in 2018, I commend the previous council and administration for having this policy, and how I'm looking at this project, and just on a personal basis, I, I think that it's, for us as a community is, is a lot of, you know, you know, getting input that's going to allow us to make the right decision, but making sure that the public is aware that we want to make sure of public safety, and making sure that this project is a good one for our community. As to, I think there was a portion in there where they would decide or help, you know, make a decision whether or not it goes through or not, am I correct?
So, further on in the spectrum, if you get into the collaborate, empower, that's where if you put something to a referendum and.
Yeah.
And people voted, that you would commit to, to doing what they say, that's why we're sort of focusing on that inform, consult.
Yeah.
End of the spectrum.
And, and that's where I'm at. You know, I, I think that we're elected here to make those hard decisions. I think referendums, you know, may or may not work depending on the situation and the public guy, but we're here elected to, to lead our community, and I, I think the policy, from what I looked at and what you've explained, is, is great, so thank you.
Director Jenkins, do you have some, like, an idea what the consult aspect may look like?
So, typically, and even just from the policy, consult, some examples would be public comments, surveys or public meetings are ways that you can do that. Just some preliminary conversations, we've talked about a page on the website potentially with a, with a comment form option, and maybe some, some sessions, but we'll, we'll see, but just an opportunity to keep that information. I think some of the questions I've fielded, because it's quite technical and, you know, being able to have those sort of frequently asked questions with the, the, the correct language and the correct information is going to be important for the process.
You know, just a suggestion, I don't know if it would work or not, but maybe even a short video clip of somebody like Sean Collins on the website, right, kind of explaining the process, and, and I, you know, I'm certainly all about public participation, I, one thing I learned with IAP2 was, you know, make sure that the public knows that, I guess, they are part of the process and not the be-all and-all, you know, we're dealing with private investment here, and, and, you know, we, we don't do that necessarily. I know this project is large, but we don't necessarily do that on other private investment and economic development opportunities, so, so I just want to kind of keep it in within a certain scope, and Counselor Wing.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley, and yes, that was, that was where my thoughts have been over the last little while, as, well, actually, since our meeting at the library with, with Sean. The question is, what are we, what are we asking the community? Because if we had, are we asking them because we think that this is a development that we need to hear about, which we do, we need to address people's concern relative to safety and to access? We want to inform people around what waste to energy looks like, we're not asking permission. The average person doesn't understand, I didn't understand, that our garbage was hauled to camera, so, so, you know, I think there's elements of informing for sure, but, yeah, if we had any other large business come to town, and we hope we do, we don't want to be in this position all the time either, we, other than always informing people as to what the opportunities are, so, thank you.
Counselor Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Question through, I don't know if this question's directed at Director Jenkins or, or communicating. at Director Jenkins or Communications Group. We often hear about, we're going to do this on the website, we're going to post it on the website, we're going to get feedback on the website. The question that I have is, how many hits do we get on our website? How is it used? Who's using it and how much of it? Are we getting a true representation in our constituency off the website? Or is it just the people that want to use the website? How do we capture the total... How many hits do we have on our website? That would be my first question.
I guess I don't have the number off the top of my head. I don't know if Ken does either. Again, depends on the page. The Swimming Lessons page gets tons of hits. Other pages get... Yeah, the Finance page, less so. But when we have had surveys or, you know, the Dodds Lake Project, some of those where we were directing people either to the website or through that with our social media and our other channels, we have managed to get relatively solid uptake, I would say. You know, our Dodds Lake, we had a whole online feedback webpage set up for that, and I think we had, yeah, well over 150, I think, was the participant level. So, again, how we're directing the traffic there. But I think for this project, being able to have the answers to the primary questions and having a place that people can go and find that information will be key. I think the other part that Counselor Wing alluded to, that in this one, where it's not necessarily just a business coming to town, as the town will be entering into a purchase agreement, but then later being issuing a permit. We don't want to be agreeing to something and then being somewhat beholden when we get to that permitting stage where we're looking to attach conditions that maybe come from some of this public feedback, if there's concerns, noise, smells, those types of things.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? No? Okay, then we have a motion. All in favor of the motion? Thank you. And we will move on to 7.2, Municipal Development Plan and Land Use Bylaw Amendment with Manager Shaw. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. You have a report today which speaks on amending our municipal development plan as well as our land use bylaw for two properties on 52nd Avenue. The landowner is interested in changing the land use from a commercial orientation to a residential. And so the first step in doing that is to amend the respective documents that we have that direct land use activity on those properties. So you have a series of three recommended motions before you. What we are intending to do is to grant or ask for first reading to our municipal development plan, changing the designation from commercial to residential for those two properties. And then the second motion speaks to amending the land use bylaw. Again, changing it from highway commercial to residential multifamily district, or R3 district. And then the last motion deals with establishing October 11th as a public hearing date, beginning at 3:00 PM here in council chambers to receive input on these particular bylaws for your consideration.
Thank you, Manager Shaw. Just a quick question before we go to the motions. But at the end, it says, landowner indicated that they plan to continue their planning and anticipated development within 24 months. So I'm assuming that has prompted this change.
To Mayor and Council, yes. The landowner has indicated that they do have an interest in changing this. Now it's a matter of beginning the process, and through that process, they will then look at the other planning and infrastructure requirements related to changing that land use from commercial to residential.
Okay, thank you. So, well, we have three separate motions here. If somebody would like to make the first motion?
Mayor Barkley will make that motion, that council gives first reading to bylaw 1694-2020 to amend map 3 Future Land Use Concept of bylaw 1363, being the municipal development plan by changing the designation for properties legally described as Lot 27, Block 2, Plan 0022784, and Lot 30, Block 2, Plan 0126102, and civically described as 3305 and 3307, 52nd Avenue, from commercial to residential.
Thank you, Counselor Dunham. There any questions? Counselor Bates?
Yeah, I have one. Could we just scroll back to that overhead? Yeah, so just the two white addresses, does one of them belong in the lower diagram?
That is correct. One of them belongs to the property at the bottom.
Both of those. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion? And then I'll please ask somebody to make the second motion. Counselor Bates?
Sure, I'll make... You want me to read that, don't you? That council grants first reading to bylaw 1470A76 to amend Schedule A of bylaw 1470, being the land use bylaw by changing the land use zoning for properties legally described as Lot 27, Block 2, Plan 0022784, and Lot 30, Block 2, Plan 0126102, and civically described as 3305 and 3307, 52nd Avenue, from highway commercial district to residential multifamily district.
Right, thank you. Any questions, discussion? All in favor? Okay, then I would please have somebody make the third motion.
I'll make that motion, thank you. That council establishes October 11th, 2022, for the public hearing to receive input on bylaw 1694-2022 and bylaw 1470A76, beginning at 3:00 PM in council chambers, being 4943, 53rd Street at Innisville, Alberta.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Manager Shaw. And we will move on to 7.3, 42nd Avenue Road Closure Lease Request with Director Jenkins.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Barkley. So we're looking to present a request for a lease of public lands, being a portion of 52nd Street Close by the adjacent property owner. So administration has received a request from Innisville Transfer Limited, the owner of 4215, 52nd Street Close, to lease a portion of the adjacent roadway for the purpose of parking trucks associated with their business. So in order to facilitate this request, as per the MGA, the municipality can't authorize the use of a road for any other traffic or close it to public traffic without the approval of a road closure bylaw. So a road closure bylaw requires three readings of council and a public hearing, as well as sign-off from the Minister of Transportation. So this is a bit of an elaborate process, likely will take in the six-month range by the time you get signatures back from Alberta Transportation. So the sale and lease of public lands policy outlines how requests such as this should be evaluated, considering the future intended use of the lands by the town, impact on the town's ability to access and maintain other lands or infrastructure, and the intended use by the applicant. So the subject lands form part of the roadway of 42nd Avenue. Kara, you can maybe just scroll down to the map there. And have been informally utilized for a number of years for truck parking by the adjacent business. The right-of-way of 42nd Avenue is very wide between 53rd Street Close and the CP rail line as a result of historic plans for railway overpasses. So in order to facilitate the lease request, the portion of the roadway will need to be formally closed through the road closure process. There's currently no town infrastructure within the portion of the roadway that would be subject to the closure. There are shallow utilities present along the north portion of the lot that will require an extension of the existing right-of-way. So the town would not have any future plans for this piece of right-of-way. It is a historic thing. You can see this shape of roadway approaching the tracks in numerous spots throughout the community, as it was a plan at one point that there would be bridges over the tracks. That's how the one outdoor rink that we call Dan's Rink exists, is because of one of these wide spots. So if the portion of the road is closed, it will remain available for the town in the future should the space be available. The sale and lease policy outlines a payment structure for the leased land, which an annual rent is equal to the municipal property taxes times two, plus an administration fee of $100. So in 2022, the annual rent for this portion would be $1,183. So we are at this point looking for council's indication of their support for this as the road closure process will require an expenditure on a surveyor to prepare the appropriate plans to describe that piece of land. Those survey costs would be borne by the applicant, and an initial quote I have is about $2,400 for that to be done. So we wanted to bring this to council for your insight prior to directing the applicant to move forward with those survey costs. The members of MPC will be somewhat familiar with this property as I believe you dealt with an application last week on the property to the south. But, yeah, I leave it at that and take any questions.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Could I please have someone make the motion? Counselor Dunham.
Mayor Barkley, I would like to make the motion that council directs administration to prepare a road closure bylaw to facilitate the lease of a portion of 52nd Street Close by the adjacent property owner.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Counselor Bates?
One. Just looking at that overhead, so it's the red area?
Yes.
And the little green area, that's just an existing road that'll stay in there?
Yeah, so the... There's the 52nd Street Close is sort of the cul-de-sac that goes into the businesses.
Oh, that's the cul-de-sac, okay. Good, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Thank you. Okay, and we will move into 8.1, Correspondence and Information. I just wanted to bring council's attention to item number two, the CAPE invoice that we haven't paid for a few months. So we need to decide whether we want to continue on with CAPE or not. And I believe they are coming to council at some point to do a presentation. Okay, thanks. 26, okay. Thank you. And I know some other communities kind of were wondering, but once I've spoke to it, people have gone ahead, and I think at this point in time, we should go ahead and pay. We did have the CAPE Annual General Meeting here in Innisville, and, you know, it's all about being at the table, right? So we just have consensus to pay the invoice? Okay? Okay. And then item number three, CEO Becker or somebody, I'm not sure, if that has any kind of impact on the community here? Or if the town of Innisville, if your administration team staff are going to have any participation in maybe one of those dates, and Red Deer, I believe, is in November?
Mayor Barkley, I talked to the manager of Fire and Protective Services, either himself or myself or both, and we'll put it to the chair of the Policing and Safe Communities Committee for potential attendance.
Great, thank you. So I'll just have somebody make a motion to accept that as correspondence, please, as information.
Mayor Barkley, I would make that motion.
Thank you. All in favor? And we'll move on to council reports, and we're starting with Counselor Dunham today.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Last Wednesday, we had the CED meeting. It was really good to see all the work that our town administration has been doing, as well as the chamber. I did, in my closing roundtable comments, once again, thank them because it's so great to see so much forward momentum on it. It's also really good to see the upcoming events, functions, and workshops that will be happening over the next several months, which I look forward to as well. Eric brought forward several new logo concepts for the CED, several of which were very, very well-received, and I'm really impressed with the direction that they're going, and I look forward to seeing what they come back with. You know, as Eric mentioned, a branding exercise generally takes quite a long time, and we're kind of putting this a little bit ahead of where we expected, but I think it's really good for us. Because, you know, so much of our strategic plan is about, you know, economic development, and to have this body and to have this committee going forward, I think, will, I think, really do well for the community, and to have that professionalism that a brand and its logo and visual identity will help represent, I think, is a really good thing. And that was it for me last week.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wing?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. So I attended MPC last Wednesday. That was our first meeting in a couple of months, so that was very interesting. Recognize, of course, the loss of Queen Elizabeth on the following day, September 8th, and thanks to administration for responding promptly by lowering our flags and recognizing the loss. Upcoming this week, of course, we have our community registration night tomorrow, but Chamber of Commerce, September Board Meeting, Parkland Regional Library Quarterly Board Meeting, Council Strategic Plan Review, Energy Hub Launch. And yes, this is the inaugural Harvest Festival, so, yeah, summer's over. Back to work. Back to work.
Thank you. Counselor Bates?
So I also attended MPC last week. The red... Plan on attending the registration barbecue tomorrow. Just could we confirm the show-up time for that, like, right now?
Yeah, we can do that right now. I'm thinking maybe 5:00. Is that okay? Is that okay, Kara?
She's nodding.
Because we're supposed to serve at 6:00, and people will come early. So as soon as the burgers are ready, there'll be people there probably to have them.
So 5:00 o'clock, okay? And Wednesday, I have the Mountain View Water Commission meeting. Thursday, the strategic planning meeting that we've discussed. And Friday, plan to go to the Energy Futures Lab conversation. I look forward to learning more about who they are and how we fit. I noticed today that Truline brought in Drywall in our houses down there, but Abby's still sitting pretty quiet. If the race is on, Truline's winning.
It's not the news everybody wants to hear. Counselor Highstone?
Thanks. It's like the horse race at the Legion. Is that what it's? Penhold Parade this past weekend, and I just want to commend the town of Penhold and the mayor and council for a good parade. I know Cindy, Counselor Maceros, is going to be away, so October 4th, when we get back from AEUMA, I'm going to sit on MPC. Had a village meeting as well, and that went well. And then, as, there's a couple of questions or emails that I'll send to Todd, just about some work on 47th Street Close. Just wanted to give you the heads up. And then I did have an odd question for bylaw. Your worship to CEO, is there a bylaw? I was asked this question at the co-op. Somebody smoking marijuana besides, you know, somebody's house, and it's a lot, and the smell is... Is there a bylaw against odor from marijuana? From household to household. Shouldn't laugh, but...
Mayor Barkley, Counselor Highstone, no, there's... We don't have a bylaw, but people have the right to smoke a certain amount of quantity across a certain amount on their respective properties.
Okay. And just, you know, I'm looking forward to the Varma, the next steps as a community. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, and Counselor Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I will be attending the strat plan meeting on Thursday. This past week has been fairly quiet politically. I've just been enjoying the last days of summer. And I'll publicly announce that I've accepted a position at the Innisville Legion as general manager going back after a couple of years. So I'm looking forward to that, to a lot of exciting things that we're going to be hopefully putting into... exciting things that we're going to be hopefully putting into place. And it's been a hectic couple of days over at the Legion, just trying to, to get my feet landed. So I thought I'd announce it here. You're the first to know. That's about it. Thank you.
Congratulations. Counselor Maseros?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. This, last week, I attended the MPC and got some alternates in order for my committees. And I, do I need to request the four weeks again?
I would recommend so. Counselor Maseros?
Okay, I'd like to request leave of absence for four weeks, starting on September 15th. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will make a motion that we grant Counselor Maseros a four week absence. All in favor? Okay, and activities, Counselor Dunham and I attended the Community Economic Development Meeting, and he said enough about that. And it was an excellent meeting. And it is exciting how things are moving forward. Stopped in at the, the caregiver forum for about an hour the, the other day, and it was a, a great turnout. So congratulations to everybody involved in that. And lots of vendors there and, and good speakers as well. Sean Collins and Andreas Carlsen from Varma were at the Central Alberta Mayors Group on Thursday night. We had about 20 mayors at the golf course. It was well attended, lots of interest. So I know they've had some contact and, and are continuing on that dialogue. Had a meeting, Alberta Muni's convention prep for the, the session that Count, or CEO Becker was, was discussing. On Saturday, I was at the Penhold Pancake Breakfast and Parade. It was a great turnout. And always good to kind of gather with fellow colleagues and from other communities and have some good discussions about various things. This week, meeting on, well, tomorrow night, registration night, Tuesday, the barbecue. And yes, there is another barbecue coming, Kara. Another grill is coming. There's another barbecue coming for Tuesday night. We, we spoke, we, we spoke about that? Yes. Another grill, because we were thinking that it might be really busy, because it was the last time we did this, whenever that was, three years ago, four years ago. Okay. And meeting Red Deer Polytechnic representative on Wednesday, Mayor Doll from Olds on Wednesday as well. And then strap plan review Thursday night and the Innisville Energy Hub. Looking forward to, to that session on Friday. So I think that's all. And we will now move into open mic session. Is there anybody online, Kara, that would like to have anything to say? Nope. Okay, anybody from administration have anything more to add? CEO Becker?
I'm Mayor Barkley, just regarding the session on Thursday night. Prior to noon tomorrow, you'll, you'll get a, a report, just to frame up the Thursday engagement.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move into upcoming events. Just have somebody make a motion to accept these. This is information, please.
Mayor Barkley will make that motion?
Thank you. All in favor? And then we'll have a motion to go in camera, please.
I'll make a motion to go in camera.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, so we'll then have somebody make a motion that we award Caleb Crimp and Kayla Snyder two scholarships for $625 each.
Mayor Barkley, I would make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wing. All in favor? Great. And then we'll have a motion for adjournment, please.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Counselor Maseros. All in favor?